Father, we thank you for this meeting today. Father, we thank you for our commissioners and our city and our mayor. I ask that you bless them. You bless them with wisdom, with knowledge, with supernatural guidance. I ask that you protect them and their families and every person in this place. Father, we thank you that we can call on you, Father, before a meeting and pray to you. We still have that opportunity to come before you and ask for heaven's help. Father, we thank you that every person here in this room, that you have safety on them, that they're here for a divine purpose in this city, and that's to serve one another. And we thank you, Father, for the men and women that are here serving. And we bless them, we bless this meeting, and we keep you in our remembrance in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on August 2nd, 1776, members of Congress affixed their signatures to an enlarged copy of the Declaration of Independence. Fifty-six congressional delegates in total signed the document. Congress adopted the Declaration of Independence drafted by Thomas Jefferson on July 4th. The President of Congress, John Hancock, and its Secretary, Charles Thompson, immediately signed the handwritten draft, which was dispatched to nearby printers. On July 19th, Congress decided to produce a handwritten copy to bear all the delegates' signatures. Secretary Thompson's assistant, Philadelphia Quaker and merchant Timothy Matlock, pinned the draft. News of the Declaration of Independence arrived in London eight days later on August 10th. Fact of the day. Okay, improvements. Any changes? Not look for motion approved?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries now. Gender review, Mr. Shepherd.
Yes, sir. I do want to mention, I was requested by Chuck to ask you to pull item number two off the consent agenda because the agreement needs some work, some additional party added to it.
No, it was three.
Is it? Okay, I looked at the agenda, I thought it was two, but it's the one regarding Rox Springs Ridge.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll pull that one. Okay, so that's the only thing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Fire update, just so everybody knows, Chief and Mavericks are both out to unknown causes, but they hopefully be back in a week or so.
All right, and I was with both of them yesterday.
Ma'am, did we get a vote on the consent?
Oh, we did.
We hadn't, we hadn't got to there yet.
Oh, we didn't get there yet?
Yes.
Because she was saying that the training and safety isn't going to be presented.
There's gonna be a slight flash.
I'll sick.
Momentarily, hard work.
Do a little song and dance for us there, Mr. Hipper.
I don't know that I have any. I'll go back to the break joke, that may be the best thing I can do for you now. It's already. It'll be momentarily.
All right, commissioners, mayor, members of the community. My name is Will Sanchez, EMS Division Chief, Apopka Fire Department. Chief Wyllum sends his apologies, he cannot be here today. As you know, he became ill earlier. I'm here to present his slides that he put together for your monthly safety and training update. Give it a minute for these to pop up.
Yeah, there's no attachment to that one.
All right, Chief Wyllum, Chief Maynard, and Nap, in their pre-council meeting updated you on the current chapters of NFPA 1500 series they're working on. NFPA 1500 is the standard for fire department occupational safety, health, and wellness programs. Essentially, it breaks down into fourteen chapters that cover the elements of comprehensive safety health plan, along with seventy-five other documents, fifty-six which are other NFPA standards. Currently, they're working on subsections of Chapter 10, Facility Safety, which covers a joint project in partnership with facilities. Safety standards including fire codes and infectious controls, CO detectors, exhaust emissions, all these at the stations. Inspections are done quarterly now. As far as our safety inspections of the stations now include our risk manager, includes a fire inspector, and our Health and Safety Division Chief Maynard. Maintenance and repair, some of our stations currently have temporary kitchens, as you guys are aware. They're being renovated, Stations 1, 2, 4, and 5 at this time. They're estimated to be completed over the next couple of months. And that's to include things from a complete kitchen remodel, stainless steel kitchen, hoods, positive pressure ventilations at the stations. Stations 3 and 4 were identified to needed, to have needed additional parking spaces and security concerns were brought up as far as for fencing, lighting, and also security. And ADA compliance at some of our stations right now for the bathrooms. They're also working on subsections of Chapter 6, which is Fire Apparatus Equipment Driver Operator, which covers inspections, maintenance, and repairs to the fire apparatuses, all tools and equipment. Correlating with his budget requests they proposed, you're seeing specialized third-party servicers and inspectors now. Testing of pumps, ladders, hoses, nozzles, and aerial devices all being contracted out to qualified individuals that specialize in those fields. This is to validate and quantify our maintenance and inspections and equipment. For a training update, this week we're hosting a live fire and training instructor course which certifies our members to assist our training chief in conducting live fire training at our training center and acquired structures. Next week, we're hosting a forty-hour course in command and leadership through Valencia College. This utilizes surrounding chiefs, instructors from the area. This class is being put on by the department and no cost to our members, once in August and again in September, for the future and current leaders of our department. Over the last several months, I know he's been up here updating you as far as more on the training division, but you guys are all aware of the building construction strategies and tactics courses that were completed. Those are two courses that are needed for the fire officer, one certification, that's one of our department requirements. In order for our members to progress and move up, they have to hold that certification. And these classes are being conducted at our training center and no charge to our members. Do you guys have any questions?
The forty-hour class that's being offered?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the cost of that one?
It's no cost to the members, the department's paying for that. That was budgeted.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
All right.
Thank you, have a great day. Thanks for pitching in, Preach, I know, we just found out, what, two hours ago? So, thanks for putting that together. Thank you. Okay, next up, Blanch, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Was?
Because it wasn't on our-
That wasn't on the-
Digital agenda.
No.
Okay.
We're in public comment right now.
Yep, public comment. Okay. Anybody, got anybody in the public? Susan?
Nikki McGuire.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, and everyone in a rightful place. My name is Nikki McGuire with Naomi Kids, organization here in Apopka. I am here to use this podium today not to ask for anything, but for us to give back to the city of Apopka by us working together on upcoming events. I want to thank everyone who helped us to pull off our Family Fund Day 2023. It was supposed to be held first on June 17th, we got stormed out and got rescheduled to July 8th. It was a great event for us. Had the commissioners and the city, all, everyone pulled together, Chief McKinley. It was a great event with one same problem on both days that we selected. There were more, the problem is, there were more than one event held on same date with invitations to the same people. Example, the commissioners, we thank you guys for running back and forth between the two events. Goliath, the SWAT vehicle, was at our event, but we found out they were asked to be at another event. The vendors had to choose, Apopka Fire Department, Apopka Police Department, the volunteers, and the general public. This is a problem that will continue with back-to-school drives, Thanksgiving, Christmas giveaway, and other public events. As you can see up on the screen, this is what our commissioners look like when we all send them invitations for stuff on the same day. Where should they go? And it's unfair for the general public, the police department, vendors, and the commissioner and the mayor to have to choose, because if they do choose one, because they're not cloned, so if they choose one and not the other, then everyone gonna wonder why did they choose one and not the other? So, we came up with a solution. Naomi stands for Never Alone, overcoming many issues, going on ten years here in Apopka. So, the solution is, we did create a Facebook page for all upcoming events. So, if you go on Facebook now, the page is active, it's called Facebook, so it's facebook.com/apopkevents, where we're encouraging all businesses and organizations to join in, and also the general public. What that page will do is, we will work together to have less duplicated events, we will be able to share volunteers, have higher attendance at events, and also help lower costs, because it makes no sense if I'm having an event over here and paying a DJ and you over there having an event and paying a DJ, we paying double cost when it's a lot better when we collaborate than compete. What's in it for you? Of course, everybody wants to know what's in it for them. So, we work together to, of course, to have the less duplicated events. One place for the general public and for the commissioners and for businesses and organizations to see all upcoming local events. Each event will also showcase the businesses or organizations involved. What you need to do right now is just simply like and follow the Apopka Events page, prepare to join monthly planning conference calls, to schedule dates and see how we can help each other out. You can reach out to me by calling at the Naomi Kids main line, it's up on your screen, or you can email events@naomi kids dot com with any questions or suggestions. I do need to tell you the following disclaimers. This is free and optional to join and participate. The city of Apopka is not responsible for any of this, and you are responsible for any additional costs such as if you select us to run Facebook ads or anything extra to promote your event, but just to put it on the Facebook page and for us to see, if you want to have an event in February, we all join the conference call to see who else is having an event, so we can all work together. So, I do hope you all will join me as we work on this together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, can I just ask, next time you Photoshop me, can you Photoshop some hair? I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it anyway, I mean, come on.
I will do my best, and I will maybe shrink you a little bit too.
Okay, then I need to get bigger then. If you can shrink him, give me-
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. Thank you all for being here. I have a few questions today to throw out there. I know you can't answer or won't address them today, but the questions will be there to be in your mind. Sometime back, apparently the city had overpaid Duke Energy some money, and the money was slated by the mayor to go to some of the homeless foundations, and apparently that money has not gone out. So, my question is, where'd the money go? Do we need a forensic audit to find out where the money went? Why are we making promises to foundations without anything coming before the commission? If the money was from Duke Energy for an overpayment of billing, then rightfully that money should have gone back to the taxpayers and the commission should decide what happened to it. Next is, I appreciate the fact that Chief Wyllum wasn't here today. Inasmuch as we can't witness how well our money invested in the coaching that he's been getting his going, that I think the city should get a refund on. Next question is, our brag about NFPA 1500, that standard was put in place in 1987. Well, why are we just now trying to get things up to snuff with it? Why are we looking to promote from within to continue the established culture of the department instead of bringing in somebody with new ideas on how to organize and better the department? I won't even get into the RFP that isolated the Gannon organization out of coming to help rectify the problems that they found. The next one is, I have just a general issue about, we took the money back out of the bank that we were losing interest in, but have we ever calculated exactly how much interest we lost? And where did that money go? Again, a forensic audit would cover that item. There's a lot of things that are going on in this city that shouldn't be going on, and I don't blame the council. It falls back onto the administration. We had a commissioner here once that missed several meetings, and until it was forced upon her to resign. She resigned because of health and left. Well, this is Commissioner Smith's third meeting that he's not present for, and we specifically held some of the items on the agenda to today because he was gonna be here. So, you know, you can't try to enforce the rules on everybody but yourself. The city needs to live to them too. Most assuredly with finances. We need to find out where the money went, what the money was used for, and why it was never discussed with the commission since it was a refund from Duke Energy as to what happened to the money. Thank you.
Next up? And Mr. New, just to let you know too, I'll be talking about the forensic audit during my council report as well.
Thank you.
Oh, don't want to go there. Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, Sylvester Hall, 3091 Roland Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. As I stated before, when I come up here, I'm gonna just remind the city of Apopka, the state of Florida, and our country, we're in a national crisis. Too many good people are sitting around watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. And when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. And to every elected official, every first responder, principles matters, integrity matters, honesty matters, accountability matters, responsibility matters, morals matters, ethics matters, character matters, procedures matters, leadership matters, and laws matter. I'm gonna keep driving at home because that's what's wrong with our political world, and that's what's wrong with our society today. We're not living by those principles. I want to go back to the last city council meeting. I was up here giving the presentation, and we had a city employee walk by me, looked like he wanted to jump on me. The meeting before that, he had another altercation with a citizen. And I say to myself, we're normalizing the abnormal, because no city employee on the clock should behave that way. Not in this chamber, not in front of the mayor. If he was my employee, he would have been fired on the spot, because I'm not setting the example for everybody else who's coming up looking at that. And he's a senior, he holds a senior position in the administration. That is wrong. If I was mayor, he wouldn't have a job today. That's holding people accountable for their actions. Moving forward, two weeks ago, I, well, actually, it was July 6th, the morning of July 6th, I went to visit a friend over at the overlooks at Parkside, and the neighbors was walking around the community. You had cars that had been spray painted with a hate crime. Nice picture of a penis and the word nigger, two or three cars painted that way. I brought it to the mayor's attention. There was complete silence. He didn't say, Sylvester, hey, look, I'll get with the chief, we'll get to bottom of this, and we'll let you know what's going on. It was complete silence. No public comment from the chief, complete silence. So, these type of things cannot and will not be tolerated in this city. As long as I'm a citizen, I will not stand for that. And we all sit, those don't exist in our communities. I'm putting everybody on notice. Racism, I will not tolerate as a black man in this country, period. I deserve my country. My people have struggled for four hundred years, and we all know the story, and it's time for accountability. The only way we're gonna get better and move forward, if everybody recognize that we have a problem, and we move together in unison to correct it. Hate crime, if you, if the chief don't know the definition of hate crime, look it up. This should have been recorded as a hate crime. The public should know about this, period. So, I ask, I come to you guys first. Mayor, you always say, Sylvester, come to me. I came to you two weeks ago, and you did nothing, and you did nothing. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Gosh, I talked to you all in person so many times that it's nerve-wracking to get up here and talk to you guys like this, but Caitlin Koshida, 841 Votal Road. As you all know, I wear a lot of hats for the community, and like a lot of people in here, we all wear different hats. And today, I am here presenting the Apopka Dog Mayor Race that you all have so graciously supported since day one, and that has really helped us kick things off. This has kind of shaken the community as far as everyone who's heard about it, they've all brought their dogs out and made just so many fun moves to bring in the community together. So, I wanted to publicly thank you guys for all of your support, because without you, I don't think that it really would have been possible to get to where we are, and here's where we are. While I can't tell you who's winning, because I've promised to keep it a secret, and I know you all are dying to find out, but I can't tell you who's winning, but I can tell you that the candidates have raised over $5,000 for their pet rescues. And I know a lot of that is due to you guys and your support, and you guys pushing all of the posts that we've been making. And for everyone who doesn't know, we have Election Day coming up, that's gonna be this Saturday. We're throwing an inauguration party, naturally, because we have to have a party. That's gonna be from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM over at Propagate Social House on Fifth Street, and that's where we're gonna announce the winner of the, of the five candidates. So, thank you all again for all your support. We did make national news a couple of weeks ago, and that was very exciting to see all of our dogs up on the big screen, so I will see you on Saturday.
Yeah, we tried to pull the, the video down, and our IT, I don't, we can't find it.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna, we're continuing to look, IT department, they've made a request to Fox and Friends.
Okay.
If we get it, we'd love to have that, you know, either at city council and/or at the event, yes.
Yes, maybe when we bring the winning dog here for the presentation, maybe, maybe we can show it then.
No, no pressure, Rob.
Caitlin, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
The speaker, the first speaker that spoke about-
Yes.
Events, right across from Propagate, we'll have the Veterans Event. So, do you have a time when you're going to make the announcement, so that I can go from that event to your event, and then go back?
Well, thank you for being so split up that night. As long as the votes stop pouring in, by 4:59 is when we're gonna stop votes coming in, and then somewhere between 5:00 and 5:30, we'll officially make the announcement. And we'll also be presenting the pet rescues, they will each have a representative there with their candidate, and we'll be presenting them with their donation check as well.
Okay, so from 5:00 to 6:00, then?
About 5:00 to 6:00, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions for Caitlin?
Um, no, and I, I have a suspicion whose dog is winning.
I'm not gonna say anything.
You just gotta know how to campaign properly.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Albert McKemmy, 3603 Golden Jam Road, Apopka. Good afternoon, mayor, good afternoon, commissioners, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today, I would like to direct some attention to the commissioners. I have here today- I have here today a petition that we've arranged and I would like the Commissioners to endorse the petition. It's a letter of censure going to Tallahassee. It's going to be delivered by Wilson Hammack. So we would invite you to join in with us, the rest of our group this here, and the residents in endorsing this document. It will in no way alter anything that you as a Commissioner or City Council intended yourself. We simply ask you to support the residents of this city in asking for some censure on what's been happening here. So I have the, the forms here that we'll give out to you to sign at a later date, should you choose to do so. In the meantime, I would like to discuss some information that was recently released on social media regarding threats that have been made both to the public and to people involved in tendering for, for work for the city of Apopka. Recently, it's came to my attention that Chris Gannon had sent the Commissioners a letter, I retained this through, or should I say obtained it through a public records request, in which it would appear that some member of the city administration, and I'm pointing to you, Brian Nelson, that you directly made a threat to Chris Gannon in which you said he would never work in the state of Florida again. Now, that may be worth smiling, but what's not worth smiling about is it's also stated, and I don't have it today because I just came out of hospital. I rushed from hospital to get here. But Brian, there's a thumb drive available with a conversation that was recorded in an analog manner by some within, within City Hall. And in that tape, I can tell exactly who made the threat. And that tape will eventually be released. It's not going to be released just now because obviously there's ongoing litigation and potentially legal repercussions. But the threats are being made. Commissioner Nick Nesta, you had recently had a threat and you said that you thought it was some supporters of Mayor Nelson that had made that threat. Mayor Nelson was indignant that in no way he would make any threat nor would any of his supporters make threats. Mayor Nelson, I'm not accusing your supporters today. I'm accusing you. Your behavior brings this city into disrepute. You personally threaten people and you intimidate people. What's now happened is members of your administration here on a weekly basis are accused of threatening people. That's from the Engineering Department all the way down. Leadership starts at the top. If our leaders don't have a code of conduct and behave in a manner that they see fit, then it's not surprising that the rest of their staff behave in the same way. People have to be held accountable. We start this today by requesting Commissioners, you endorse our forensic audit. We need to see that this city has been run in an appropriate manner. Thank you.
Yep, okay, all right. We have six agenda, six consent agenda items, but we're gonna, we're gonna pull Consent Agenda Item 3. So look for motion to approve the five consent agenda items.
Before you do that, number five, that FOCUS, FOCUS, FOCUS?
FUSIS.
FUSIS. Would, just because we have a dedicated public and just to explain what that issue is.
Do you want, do you want?
Whoever would best, yes, would, would serve that, yeah.
Let Chief do it.
Yeah. That's all. Thank you, I appreciate that.
If you recall, we did a presentation on FUSIS. It's the integration of the camera systems, our body worn cameras. It's technology to bring everything under one platform. What we're looking for is servers to provide a space to store all the camera data, the body camera data stored by Axon. But also as we move forward with intersection cameras, we need storage area for that. So to keep everything under one platform, we're purchasing the servers from FUSIS. It's, IT supports the idea just so that everything's on one platform and everything works together. And because we were over the $50,000 threshold, it had to come back to y'all. It is a line item budget in our budget already.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had an inquiry and I wanted, it's public. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, look for motions to approve the five consent agenda items.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Next up, business item, authorize the street closures for the Armando Borjas Junior Scholarship Foundation Together as One Festival. Bradley Williams.
Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Whoops, too far, sorry. I'm here this afternoon. We received a few special permit application requests for some street closures. This would be for two events, the Together as One Festival and the 9/11 Memorial Run 5K. The event date and time would be September 23rd, 2023. The road closure being affected would be Fifth Street between South Park Avenue and South Central Avenue in addition to some rolling roadblocks throughout the 5K course. This was approved by staff and the DRC at the July 19th, 2023 meeting. These are some overlays of the events themselves. On the left, you can see the Together as One Festival with the closure between South Park Ave and South Central. And then the right side shows the course for the 5K, which would include the rolling roadblocks. As I, as I mentioned, both the street closure and the 5K route have been reviewed by staff, including the Police Department and Fire Department, and are recommended for approval as well as the approval of the DRC. I also have, we also have with us today Ms. Caitlin Keshida. She is here on behalf of this backup, on behalf of this event. And I could invite her up here to say some words about it if she'd like.
Hello, me again. So as you can see, this is our September 23rd 5K memorial run and festival. We are so excited to bring this event to this particular area. There is a planning committee behind me all the way and we've been working together really hard to put together an event that the community will love and that brings honor and memory to those who lost their lives on 9/11, as well as honor those who rose up in service because of 9/11. So we're just all really excited to bring this. Before this particular event, though not on the scale that it's at, at this, at this date that's coming up, it has been held over at the Jason Dwelly Parkway, which has been wildly successful from what I hear. I wish I was involved then, but I'm picking it up now with everybody else. And we really wanted to move it over to the downtown area. We believe the community will benefit from it being in that central location. We know the businesses will benefit because of the amount of traffic we're anticipating. And so we're really hoping that we can get the big thumbs up from you guys today so we can move forward and keep pushing through.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any questions for Bradley or for Caitlin? Not, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Now we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to authorize the street closures for the Armando Borjas Junior Scholarship Foundation Festival.
Can, I, just one question. Because I see the date is, is September 23rd. Will the city be hosting a memorial on the actual day of? And that, I'm directing that question to the chair, Mr. Mayor. On September 11th, will, will we as the city be hosting a memorial for? Okay.
So moved?
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now. Thanks.
Sorry, one more thing before I leave. I did also, first of all, thank you so much for passing this event. Really excited for it. One of the things that this event, that we're hoping this event does is kind of build a, just a platform for other events to take place on Fifth Street. And we are in the beginning stages of planning a New Year's Eve block party for this particular area, not on, you know, this, you know, big of a scale with the vendors and the, all the food trucks we have coming in the touch of truck zone. That's, that is exclusive to this event being what it is. But we are in the early stages of a New Year's Eve block party for this area. So be on the lookout and I will see you again soon. Thank you.
All right. All right, next up, we've got ordinance number 3,018. Bobby Howe.
We didn't do number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, which is the authorization.
Yes. So who's, Joe, you're doing it.
Afternoon, everybody. Joe Patton, Director of Human Resources. In our last meeting for this proposal, we wanted to, or the council wanted to bring up Bob Spencer, who was the instructor from the Institute of Human Development. And he prepared some information that was requested by the Commissioners in our meetings during this week. I know some of you had some questions. So we tried to put together those answers. So I'd like to hand it over to, to Bob and introduce himself to you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Robert Spencer. Robert Spencer, 1224 Foxfire, Apopka. At this point, do you have questions for me? What are we gonna do here?
I think you need to kind of give the public a little sense.
Yeah, you have to give them, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. We started leadership training just after COVID. Planning had started for that pre-COVID. But when obviously COVID hit and no classroom training was allowed after that. So it picked up again. We've done one full class with the leaders at this point, defined some additional areas of focus, initiated the first measurement tool, which the Commissioners saw last meeting. We met with each of you this past week to give more information on where we're going. We're hoping to, the folk, the focus is cultural change in the leadership. And it's a continuing process.
Okay, any questions for Bob Spencer?
Not really questions for him. I mean, again, we, we had a chance to discuss on Monday his background. He was, provided us some literature. I'm assuming everybody got the same stuff?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So, and, and I was quite transparent. So this should come as no shock to anybody that was in the room. You know, on, on the surface, we're, we're asking, we're being asked to vote on first and foremost, per our purchasing policy, whether or not we feel Mr. Spencer's services are an evaluated source or sole source. You know, under our, our policy, evaluated source, only after conducting a comprehensive review of all available competitive sources. And then sole source just means they've got a proprietary method by which they're doing the leadership that would imply that there's only one vendor that's able to, to do this service. From my own experience, I know that not to be the case. And we, and we, we talked about that on Monday.
Yes.
You know, the, the manner in which he does his consulting and, and leadership training could be viewed as proprietary in the sense that he does it his way and 10 other people could do it slightly different and by nature, that's proprietary. My struggle is, you know, first of all, I, I don't think that's the spirit of sole source or evaluated source because there is so many people that consult and do leadership training, not only in this immediate area, but really across the nation. But I did ask for you to provide this data, which is, which is good. In 2022, it looks like there was 19 people that went through the process. My struggle is six of those people are no longer employed with the city. So a third of them took that training or, or knowledge that they got away from the city.
Yes.
And I know that your executive class is on hold. I think the executive class would be inclusive of the mayor, maybe the chiefs, because I don't think the chiefs went through this yet. And then city administrator when that position is hired. And my struggle is, first of all, we need to stabilize our workforce first. You know, when you've got a third of the people that have taken the class that within the last year, a third of them are gone, that's, that's very concerning for me. Then like we discussed on Monday, and I don't want to speak about your methodology and whatnot, but whenever you come to do leadership training, you have to anchor yourself about what, what your client is all about. In a business, it would be memorialized within a strategic plan, which we don't have. So lack of strategic plan, instability in staff. My fear is that we're chasing a moving target. We're going to train people, those people are going to leave. Then you have a requirement to train more people. The, kind of, some of the goals, and like we discussed on Monday, some of them are fairly aspirational in nature. And one of, the last one, I think from a recommendation standpoint is, support senior leadership team until tipping point is achieved and empowerment becomes the new norm. You know, some of these things, it's like, how are we going to quantify this? I don't have a good sense of what attrition rates are in public services versus our police department versus some other department. We wouldn't need to have that number to say whether or not, are you stopping that attrition?
Correct.
Is what you're doing really making the change that's going to be required? And, you know, some of the survey results, if that training was done in 2022, some of the surveys results don't reflect some of those departments, the effectiveness that I would expect to see.
Some of that is, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink.
Yeah. And that's my fear.
Yeah.
And I, to me, I don't.
We're still, we're, we're working on building that flow and getting re-engaged along the way to keep the culture moving. But it takes, as you know, it takes a lot.
I'm, I'm gonna use another silly analogy. But right now, it feels like we're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Whereas our strategy should dictate whether or not we want round pegs or square pegs. And we don't know that.
Yeah.
We don't know what we want. And so it's hard to coach people up or mentor people into breaking down silos, as we discussed on Monday, or doing things in the spirit of what our culture is all about if we don't have that mission, if we don't have that vision, if we don't have the strategic planning in place, which we don't.
As of yesterday afternoon, the city manager Chuck, he stepped up. That was a meeting with Commissioner Velasquez. And he is excited at this point to start. I think he had a talk with some of the staff and is ready to start working with me or with whomever to, it's time to get a vision statement going. Because I totally agree, you gotta know where you're going to get there. There are some basic truths in leadership today that fit the, the values patterns. And some of that is very just basic stuff. But getting that specific focus on top of that, I totally agree. And then it's got to be measured and they've got to get feedback on results.
Yeah, and what I don't want to have happen is me try to challenge what you're doing. Because you have your business, you have what you do, you have your methods. And, you know, from some of the testimonies that you provided has been very effective on some of the places that you've been. So I don't want this to be about me kind of attacking what you do. But I, I just think that from a city perspective, we're not empowering you to be most effective in terms of what you're doing. Because we don't have something for you to anchor back to to say, this is what you're doing.
Sure.
To lead towards.
So I understand what you're saying, Commissioner. But we have to start somewhere. I can't predict who's gonna leave, who's gonna stay. Can't predict that. People train all the time. Individuals go through training, they go through leadership training, they go through all the types of things. And they still end up leaving for whatever reason. I don't know. It's hard to predict. What we can do is to begin the process. We can begin the process by. We can begin the process by, you know, giving tools to individuals that supervise others that may not have those tools at present. So with that, we start with this program by getting them to know themselves, who they are, getting to learn their employees and who they are by, you know, identifying personnel types or personality types, so on and so forth, beginning to identify what their strengths are and how they can use those, how to put those, you know, how to treat those employees with different situations. So it's a, it's beginning blocks of that. We're not, we're not going to overturn this thing overnight. I don't, I'm not sure if that's what you expect, but I think you said it yourself, it's going to take time. And it does. And because we look at the turnover right now, you know, I can't tell you that we're not going to have more turnover or whatever. I, I can't tell you that. Will we? Probably. I mean, I'd be an idiot if I stood here and tell you, no, nobody else is going to leave after they have training or whatever. But we can give them some tools, and we can help them overcome some issues, pressures or whatever, to try to give them that assurance. So some of the things that they learn in, in this leadership course, and we've changed it, actually, we've added some more modules to it with, with the help of Bob and listening to the other individuals that have gone through the program. So some of those things are, you know, how do we deal with specific situations that we come along with, within employees? And, you know, it's, it's very stressful to deal with employees that may have problems or, you know, disciplinary issues or so on and so forth. So we try to walk through the process, you know, what, first, you know, the due process, what, you know, what is your due process? And some people have no idea what that is, because they haven't been given the training for that. So if it's frustrating for them, because they can't deal with it systematically, they don't know who to go to, so that's, and, and what, what's in their pocket to help them overcome that? So that's what we try to give them, try to give them some knowledge as to, okay, this, this is some of the situations you may run into with employees. This is, this is basically a conversation you may have in an evaluation sitting. You know, it could be as simple as that, and some evaluations are not easy. So we try to give them those tools to help them overcome, be more comfortable with who they are, help their employees. That's the idea. We don't want turnover. We try to prevent turnover. But to give them tools, instead of an employee or a supervisor going to them and saying, well, I can't, I can't deal with this anymore, you know, this employee has to go, and then they come to me and I say, well, how have you coached them? And then they get frustrated at that, you know what I mean? So we're trying to give them the tools, and I'm not saying everybody is like that, but I, we're trying to give them the same tools across the board to help them advance their skills.
Yeah, and, and I would argue that, you know, a motivated employee is an engaged employee. And an engaged employee, again, having a team that comes together to say, hey, we've got, we've got three things that we want to accomplish over the next three months. That is to create who we are as our mission for this city, what's our vision, to Mr. Spencer's point, and what's our strategic plan across each one of our departments. That puts skin in the game for every single one of those employees to say, hey, I've got a voice and a vision, and that's going to, there's going to be some puts and takes, but at the end of this thing.
Right, yeah.
We've got our, our North Star, our guiding principles to say, now when the services of Mr. Spencer come in the room, if you're still having challenges around people management or people interaction, or like we discussed on Monday, knocking down silos, because maybe your finance department's not talking to your police department, or your HR department's not talking to whomever else, and knocking those things out, yeah, but in the spirit of marching to the same strategy in your strategic plan. And we don't have that. And so what, it, it seems to be like we're attacking this in a backward situation, where we're trying to say, go fix it, but what are we fixing? Does every director know what their attrition rates are and why those people are attriting and leaving? Do we know what their goals are or what their vision is for their own individual departments? Because absent that, if no one can present that to me, we're, we're, we're chasing money after, or we're throwing money after something that we don't know is going to be most effective.
Well, and what, what I'm trying to say is that we're trying to give them the basic knowledge. It's not about where are you headed in the future, although that could, it's a, it's a component of what happens later. We're trying to give them basic knowledge as to managing. And like I said, we have to start somewhere. And I totally agree, we need a vision and a mission. I've, you know, I've said that for a while now. I totally, I've agreed with you 100% the whole time. We've said that, and we've talked about it many times, and it, and it, and it does have to come from the top, and I think you, you all should be part of that as well. But right now, what, what our goal is, my goal, and I think the mayor's goal, and I'm not going to speak for Edward, he's not here anymore, but that was the, the challenge that was given, you know, let's, let's give them some basic tools that they can do to overcome some obstacles that they have, those of, you know, working in silos and so on and so forth, and, and I think we've, you know, talked about that before, but that, that is the basic gist of the first leadership program. It's not to say that it's not going to be ongoing, but we, we need to tackle this first step.
Yeah. Yeah, and last comment.
Sure.
And, and I fully agree. I do think there's a time and a place for empowering our employees through great leadership, through, if it's a new manager and who hasn't maybe been a people manager before, I totally agree with that. I think the city council should be more involved, and I think it should, again, we're kind of debating two things here. One, the timing, and then two, the sole source versus evaluated source. You know, if Mr. Spencer's holds up, you know, I don't see there's any harm in going out and saying, hey, what other options are available? And if, if this was the best option, then we can take the best option. That's, that's just where I stand. Sorry.
No, it's okay. The only thing I did forget to ask you yesterday, because we did discuss this, why were you considered a sole source? And my understanding is that because you started the program and sort of in between, from what I understand, and rightfully so, it kind of was put on the shelf when our former administrator got sick. And I believe that was the next module that you were going to continue with. So I, I can see why it would be feasible to continue, because you already started. But what I didn't ask yesterday, and I should add, should have asked, as I'm listening, at the end of each module, when you are with a group, are they asked to assess what they're getting from the program? Because I remember when we go to the ethics class with Florida League of Cities, at the end of the four hours, you know, our moderator would say, you know, if there's any recommendations, what did you get from this, what did you learn from this, is there something additional? He likes the feedback for the next time. So I'm, I'm asking you, is that done?
Good, good question. Each class will end with a homework assignment that will have them use the skills they learned that week. First part of the next class, they will report out what they did, how they did it, what worked, what didn't work. And by the time we get to the very end of the program, the plan is to have the directors that they are working for and their, could be a supervisor or whatever levels above them, that they would show up, and it will be the class giving a presentation to them of everything they've learned and how they've used it and what it's doing for them.
So no, I don't quite understand that, because so far, you've only provided this leadership program to directors and that, you know, we're now talking about the staff.
We didn't, we didn't do that on the first class. It has been tabled. I expect to come back to that. In other words, once, as you said, when Edward became ill, it's changed the whole dynamics. So once we have vision kicked in, because I totally agree with Commissioner, we've got to have that, we've got to know where we're going. Once we've got something moving in that direction, then we kick the next class in concurrently with that. That starts to build momentum. They're getting the basic skills and the philosophies of what empowerment looks like. As that moves forward, the, the pieces of the puzzle start to fall together.
So, and I do remember where I had said to you, would you be referring to this, which was the employee survey? Because this gave you a lot of information about what the staff is feeling overall.
Yes, yes.
So I, I want to make sure that the program is addressing some of the issues
Yes.
that are of concern. And, and I, and I said that to you.
Yeah. And even on the first class, Joe Patton is going to be presenting a part as well, which will start to get us focused on that.
Okay.
Because that's our first measuring tool.
Okay.
Okay? And back to Commissioner Becker. If you've got some suggestions, timelines, ways to work with this, I'm wide open. I mean, with 30 years' experience, it's like, let's talk, we can adjust, we can refocus, we can, you know, do what we got to do, but let's make this thing work.
Bob, just for the record, could you kind of give some of your clients, you know, just, I don't think the public, because obviously you had.
Okay.
Your individual meetings, but, you know, for the public.
Thirty years' experience, your mayor, with, I've done classes with Lockheed Martin all across the United States and in Europe. I've done Walt Disney World, all of resorts, all of parks, and all of the supporting areas. Disney University for a number of years, have worked then with Advent Health, Orlando Regional back in the day, AT&amp;T, Arthur Andersen, I can go on and on.
Thank you.
But over the 30 years, it's, it's getting a sense for where the corporation, the company's at, and that takes a bit, I have found, to get that feel. And then we start coming together, and I would welcome working with you guys if that's something you want to do. I think it would be, because from my point of view, we've got to have the city overriding view. Where are we going? Then each department, and one of the things that came up was, directors thought the city was being too reactive and not as proactive as they could be. And that, to me, now comes down to a department level. How do we get a division, excuse me, a vision for each department that's, the people are involved in creating? How do we become proactive? How do we help the people of a Popka without causing as much static sometimes as they have to go through?
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, no, I, I echo a lot of the, the comments that have ever been made. I think the, the biggest one right now is, is the fact that we don't have a strategic plan. And I think, to your point, which, with what you just said, is that if we can, if we can create a strategic, strategic plan up here, that will then trickle down into each department, and they kind of understand.
Yes.
Their roles better, and it, it creates more proactivity and also confidence within their own department. And I think the biggest thing, and I'll leave it with this, is that you said it yourself, is that some horses just don't want to drink water. I think that's our biggest stumbling block.
That's, yes.
In this city.
Yes. I also think it can happen concurrently, as Dr. Patton was saying, some of the basic skills in terms of empowerment. For example, a lot of leaders go autocratic and do a negative reprimand, when maybe that's not really what should be done. So we need more of a non-punitive approach at first, holding people accountable. And some leaders are going to be better at that skill, and some are not. And those skills could be learned along the way. I could be learning how to do non-punitive, I can learn how to do active listening and when and how to do that, and understand the strengths and weaknesses of my people. Just as long as we start getting towards the end of that, we've got now a focus to put it all on, and that's where that vision comes in. And if we get something from you all, I think that would be fabulous. And then we can start going with each department. But if each department comes up with it, and we don't know at a department level what your focus is, we could be.
Yeah.
We could be scattered everywhere. It's like a shotgun.
Well, I think that's the point, I think it, it may be worthwhile to, to potentially table this or delay it until we come up with a strategic plan as a council. Where do we see the city going in one year, two years, five years, 10 years, 30 years? Although there are plans that have already been in place, but we're just not following those. So come up with an updated plan so that we can then direct staff appropriately from there. Because again, how, how does each department know what their, what the goals are there? And then, and something we discussed too in our meeting was metrics. How do we track success, failure? How, how do we track that there is growth happening within departments, as well as within leadership as well? So, and that's a little bit more difficult to do.
Measuring soft skills has always been a challenge. And oftentimes, it comes out, it's two, three years from now, when you take a look at it, and you realize, oh, yeah, the turnover, first class, we lost six of 19. To me, that's a red flag. Okay? Something isn't right. So we get down the road two years, and all of a sudden, we've got a class of 19, and there's only one person that left. And why did they leave? Because they got a really good promotion somewhere, but they didn't leave because they were unsatisfied, not feeling fulfilled. Does that, does that lead to more questions?
I guess let's hear what public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
My dear Anne Claremont, with all due respect, if you have to sell it that hard, you don't need it. Please consider voting no on this item. There is a few reasons why you should not vote this. This was never brought to the commission beforehand, you didn't get a chance to evaluate it or vote on it. There are no metrics to measure the success of this program. There doesn't seem to be a schedule on billable hours. This obvious, obviously should not be sole sourced, as there are many other options available. The cost to unmeasurable benefits is ridiculous. You can task the HR director to provide proof that this is absolutely necessary and provide some kind of evidence of it being successful to the taxpayers. The same HR director had an opinion that a neutral response on the employee's evaluation survey was a positive. I disagree. If an employee is satisfied, there would be no other reason to state otherwise. This administration seems to have no problem spending money one way, yet we must fight vigorously to spend money where it is proven to be needed, staff, training, and safety. You should not approve this item based on opinion or just to go on to the next item. There are no indications that this program is working or that it's helpful, and no such plan has been presented even today to exactly who will take part, for how long, and how it will be billed, and how it will be measured for its effectiveness. As a personal opinion, it is incredibly a sad state of this city, that people that we trust are already elected and appointed, and these leadership positions even requires this. This solidifies further proof that we have poor leadership and poor management in this city. This evidence is absolutely what led to the death of firefighter Austin Duran. In no way will one hour or eight hours of this class build a leader. We can add that $54,000 plus dollars. We can add that $54,000-plus to fund training for our firefighters. Please vote no on this business item one and allocate that money to the fire department. Thank you.
We hear a lot today about leadership and values. And I like to think that we, who used to be called the peanut gallery, come here on a regular basis now to be educated in trying to understand how this city administration works. But unfortunately, you must be failing, because I certainly don't understand how this city administration is operating. What we appear to have here is a contractor who was employed as a consultant to evaluate the deficiencies of the communication skills within the city. Subsequent to his evaluation, he was then contracted to do other work in remedying that situation. So, because it was under a certain value, there was no RFP required, and the ongoing contract has been supplied because it was under a certain amount of money. So, my question is, can you explain to me where my misunderstanding is? You see, when Gannon Emergency Solutions came here, they did exactly the same. They were requested to evaluate a deficiency within the organization. They evaluated that deficiency, and then were being told that legally, they can't solve the problem, because they were the ones who evaluated that in the first place. So, can someone explain to me why this gentleman came in, evaluated significant deficiencies in communication, and then he was contracted to repair the situation? Isn't exactly that what you refused to allow Chris Gannon to do? He could have certainly come in and had modules and evaluated things and worked on the same basis as this. To me, it reeks of double standards. The first thing that we should be doing isn't evaluating leadership, it's evaluating the legality of what this administration does. Continuously, in my opinion, along with many residents, this administration operates in a dictatorship. They do what they want without any legal reason to do it. They subsequently invent legal reasons to do it. Thank you.
Just, out of a matter of respect for the, Mr. Spencer, what I don't want this to turn into is, you know, Mr. Spencer's doing his job to the best of his ability. I think the conversation would be around, how is the city utilizing Mr. Spencer's services? Out of respect for Mr. Spencer, I'm not implying that that's where this is going, but I just want to be mindful of that.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia. This is by no means a reflection of Mr. Spencer. This is the same fellow that was hired as the coach before it was brought to the council under the billing irregularities. It's over $20,000, it's supposed to come to the council. The invoice has far exceeded that amount of money already. So as a taxpayer, I have concerns with that. What I read here is a money pit. Okay? It's an open-ended source. So this week, I'm going to come up with a new class on this widget. Next week, it's that widget. The issue is, leadership starts at the top. Okay? And not everybody is born to be a leader. You can take some people and train them to be a mediocre supervisor, but they're not leaders. Okay? This fellow uses the comparison of putting tools in the box for people. I taught at the Fire Academy for 15 years. First, you have to get people to open the box. Then you have people that have a padlock on the box, and it takes a little more coercion. Then you have people whose boxes are welded shut, and in no way should they ever be in the position that they're in. That's the situation we're in with the fire department. No amount of training is going to correct the deficiencies there. Okay? You can have all the classes you want. The way this is written for an open-ended invoice contract is a money pit. I express and have the same concerns that Mr. McKinney did. How come it works for this fellow, but it didn't work for Gannon? And he'd already identified the problems. The issue is leadership, and until the city gets leadership, we can't fix what's below there. And what's below there is not necessarily the people that are sitting in those positions. If you're looking for leadership, you need to strive for the city's future. And sometimes, the people you want to send to classes like this fellow is offering are not the actual director of the division, because that guy might be leaving in two years or five years. You may want to pick another employee that's subordinate to him to start getting any kind of training to get him up to speed to fill the vacancy. The problem with promoting from within, and I like to use this from the fire department, is it continues the established culture. In the case of the fire department, it's the very same established culture that killed Austin Duran. You can't train the untrainable. When I was teaching, we'd have people that were taking an engineer's class, and you couldn't teach them to pour water out of a boot with the instructions on the heel. You can't just grab anybody and teach them to be a leader. There has to be some intestinal fortitude and a willingness to open the toolbox to get the education they need.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I won't go over every, Sylvester Hall of Apopka, I won't go over everything that's been highlighted. But I will say this, keep repeating this, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth, to the point where we don't even want to hear the truth. Now, Mr. Spencer, I agree, Commissioner Becker, it's not a attack on him, but this city, when we brought him to the table, I'm a businessman, he'll, he's a businessman. When you bring me to the table, you're not sure what you want. Hey, my job's just to train you, here's my training. What it leads to, what is the outcome, that's really not his responsibility. He's there to train. So when we look at the city, when you bring somebody here and you don't have an agenda, it's on you. It's not on the company that you hired. I come in, you tell me you need three or four times fixed, that's what I'm going to give you. So again, leadership is paramount, but we refuse to look at, we have a leadership problem. And Mayor, I start with you. We refuse to look at, we get so many examples, but it's just going deaf ears. Thank you.
Anybody else in public wish to speak on this matter? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any input in council?
You know, we've heard from, in public comment, and obviously, they're not confident, and they don't feel that this program is going to help whatever the problems are that we have here, the issues are. And I do agree with them in the sense that we need to have, and actually, that's been spoken up here, we need to have some kind of direction or mission. And it's nothing, and I agree with Commissioner Becker, this is not any reference to Mr. Bob Spencer at all. We just don't feel confident that we're bringing a program into the city to address a problem that we haven't really defined and set, a strategic plan, how do we want to address it? This has been going on for a long time. And I did tell Mr. Spencer that I met him over a year and a half ago in the parking lot when it first started, and you did explain to me what you were doing then. And it did get put sort of on the shelf because of, you know, our chief administrator who did become ill. So this is the dilemma that we face right now, is we would like to have, not from Mr. Spencer, because that's not his responsibility, it certainly comes from this end, is sort of a mission. What is it we want to accomplish? And we do owe this to Mr. Spencer, is that he has been paid for some services that he has not been able to conduct the classes. So, I think at this point, it would probably be best to kind of table this so that we can, well, staff, with the administrative staff, and unfortunately, the interim chief administrator is gone. And he did express that he was going to work on a, on a statement, on a mission, on what, how he wanted this project to kind of move forward. Because I don't want to say no, and I don't want to say yes, when there's an uncertainty about the program. And in all fairness to Mr. Bob Spencer, is that he has been paid for some of the services that have not been conducted. And so, that's sort of a dilemma for us, because I want him to provide the services he was paid for, that was put on the shelf. So...
So you're saying we prepaid for that? I guess I didn't realize that.
We have paid for some modules that have not been...
That haven't been completed.
Right.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. And that was the last one, that was supposed to include our late chief administrator with the mayor. That was the module that was paid for and was not conducted.
Yeah, just to, priority one needs to be, we have to set someone like Mr. Spencer or whomever else up for success.
Right.
And we've got to be very clear about what we're trying to accomplish in this.
Right.
I don't think that we've set him up for that yet. The, you know, you mentioned soft skills before. I do, and one of the things I do like about his program is the use of DISC, because from a soft skill perspective, it gives you a personality trait of a person who takes that analysis. If you know this, I'm a DC, by the way, which is kind of an anomaly. But anyway, anyhow. But to public comment, there's some valid points there. I mean, if we, if we were to approve something like this as an evaluated source, what's to say that Gannon doesn't beat that same criteria? Because again, the thought process is here, Mr. Spencer has had a relationship with the city, he's starting to know the people, how it's run, and things like that. The same could be argued around Gannon and what they were, what they were starting to do with their, with their safety reporting. So it's a little bit of a slippery slope there. I think to Commissioner Velasquez's point, you finish what we started in terms of the initial scope of what you hired him to do, and get our, we've got a whole bunch of testimonials, but get some testimonials from our own staff, and how it's impacting them, how it's benefited them in their job. And then, I think having more of that information to come back with us with either says, hey, we're better suited to say this is something worth investing more in. But again, to Mr. New's point too, it's got to be finite, it's got to be a finite statement of work, so that we can kind of container, containerize this thing. But I just think it's premature to make a decision on this one.
Yeah, and I agree, I agree with, all the sentiments already been shared. It's not a no, it's not a yes, it's just a not yet. I think the first thing we need to be doing is coming up and really workshop, I think this would be, this is the perfect thing for a workshop for us, to go over a mission statement or a strategic plan. I think this is exactly what a workshop should be for us, is exactly that, to be able to have some open discussion, see where we want to be in five, 10, 30, 50 years. Come up with a mission statement, and then let's apply that throughout the city. And I think that gives us a huge power moving forward, and it empowers our department heads and all of our employees to understand the goals there. So, again, it's not a, it's not a no, it's just, I think, we need to put some things in line first before we can really create a successful plan here.
And maybe the chair could kind of shed some insight there, because, you know, make it fun for the staff. I mean, query the staff to say, hey, what is our, what's most important for us day to day, when we come in City Hall, or Public Services, or Police, or Fire? What is it that we're trying to accomplish on behalf of our city and our residents? What's our vision? Where are we wanting to go? Because again, eventually, our slogan is going to move away from indoor foliage capital of the world at some point in the future. What's our next stage of evolution as a city? And then each department has their own kind of, what am I trying to accomplish? Someone coming to Public Services every day in the sanitation department has a wildly different purpose than someone putting, strapping on a bulletproof vest and going and protecting our residents. I mean, it's just wildly different. And all of that stuff then becomes part of the budgeting process to say, hey, is every single cent anchored to something that's important to us in our department? I think it would, I think it would, the staff would be well received. I don't think anybody would view that as cumbersome work. Put some contest around it or have some fun around it. But I think, and I think it would be time well spent of us kind of huddling together and doing that once we start getting some of that. Because I want it, I want it to be staff-led more than anything. And then, because again, all five of us up here are disposable in the sense that, you know, we're going to rotate up here. But having something that, you know, has some sort of stability, I think would be beneficial.
Okay. I mean, just a couple of things. Brian Foreman was the first one to pick up the program for Bob Spencer. And if he didn't think it was any good, he wouldn't have picked him up. And you're now working for Claremont as well, so obviously, I think that's a pretty, you know, bold statement, that he didn't have to pick anybody, and yet he picked Bob Spencer to go to Claremont to help him with his leadership training. I'll say this about, you know, what, my goals when I brought Bob in, yeah, we, obviously, we need to have, you know, vision, we need to have a, you know, a mission statement. But I think what we've, we, the city have always run on very compartmentalized departments, so that, you know, the police didn't talk to Public Works, fire didn't talk to Parks and Rec. And so, my whole goal was to make sure that we get the departments working together better, because I think we're all siloed. I think we were starting to make some progress in opening up those silos, that we're all kind of engaged. But the second part was, is we've been so autocratic that it's always been a top-down, do what I say, going back 20 years. So it's not just, it's not, you know, you go far back as you want to go. So what I was asking our department heads, hey, give me that up-and-coming person that you think could be a leader, because you get somebody that's great at their job. They're, man, they're the best at mowing the grass, they're the best at putting out fires, they're the best at, you know, as our resource officer. But are they a leader? And so, just because you're a great worker, I mean, you're the best at fixing, you know, a lift station, doesn't mean you're a leader, you know? So when you make that leap from, you know, your own, just doing your own thing, to now I've got four, five, 10, 20 people under me, that's, that's what I wanted to do with this program, is let's find those, so we've identified 20-something, 22 up-and-coming, what we want to be leaders, but we don't, we want to set them up for success. We don't want to say, oh, you just got the new position, you got an extra bump in pay, you know, lead. I mean, that's not the way things work. And so, those leadership skills is what Bob wanted to bring. I want to get them early so that they don't fail based on no leadership training, that I've always been told, you know, the boss man tells me to do it this way, I'm going to do it that way. Not how we lead our team forward. So, you know, it sounds like the, you know, the council wants to table it, and I understand. And I know that Chuck Vabrick has reached out already to all the departments to come up with a team, to look at a mission statement. So, I know we'll be putting that together here in the next couple of weeks. So, you know, find and table it, but I just want you to know, my rationale was, you know, we need leaders from within, and we, if we don't train them, they'll never be a good leader. And then second, you know, we've got to get more, we've got to eliminate those silos, we've got to work together as a team, and the team is the whole city, not just each department within its own silo. So with that, I mean...
And to that end, I mean, like even elected officials, right? The Florida League of Cities has different varying degrees of leadership training for newly elected officials, or after you've been in the position for a year or two, you go back for a refresh, of course, et cetera.
Yeah.
I would love to have that. But to me, that seems like a very focused, hey, we're going to specifically budget this every year, year in and year out, versus us just kind of doing a one-off, sole source or evaluated source. This should be something that says, hey, we're going to put this much money in the budget, that way, when you do have individual contributors, you're right. I mean, if I'm a rock star individual contributor, that doesn't mean I know how to manage people.
Correct.
Schedules, making sure they're doing PTO correctly, all the HR-related stuff that goes with people management.
Right.
And I think that should be built in. And that's another one of those earmarked training budgets, where you may not use it every single year. You may have a supervisor or director-level staff that's very static, and doesn't turn over as much, and on... and doesn't turn over as much, and on other years, you may have more turnover for whatever reason. But I agree with certain ones of your points, but I still think that we're a little bit premature.
Well, I think, yeah, to that end as well is that it's just, it's formalizing everything you just said, let's formalize it. That it's creating within, it's creating that leadership, that confidence for employees to become leaders within our city. So I think, again, it's that formalization that will be key, and it'll create buy-in from there as well. So, and it'll only help create success within this program. So what would be best here? Would it be best to table it for, and we have to table it to a certain date?
Well, I mean, you've got on here, on your Gantt chart that you put together, Mr. Spencer, you had, excuse me, executive class on hold, but that was at the end of last year. So I guess whenever that revision or revised date would be, that seemed like it would be the next logical kind of decision point. Whatever that's, because I know that's predicated on a new city administrator being appointed to a role.
So do you want to just make certain, or do you want to just?
I don't, you can't table indefinitely.
The, where are we at right now?
Yeah, you can. And just table it?
Can you table?
I don't think you can.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you table this indefinitely?
Well, there's no requirement for you to do this specific thing at all. So in that regard, the answer is yes. Unless you have an internal policy that says no, then you could certainly do it. I don't know if you have an internal policy that would say that, like Rules and Procedures of Council. Typically, the things that you don't table definitely have a timeline associated with them or a deadline associated with them, or there are things that where a developer or somebody's coming forward with something and needs a timely response to continue with the project. This doesn't fall into that category.
So can I make the motion?
Sure.
Yeah, but the dilemma here, and my concern is that we did pay him for a service that has not yet been provided. And so he, you know, in fairness to Mr. Spencer, he wants to be able to.
Sure.
Conduct that module. And then kind of after that, because it only came to us because the next module had brought him over the threshold. So how does that work?
So how I would make the motion is, we would table this until the currently paid-for or procured modules are completed, including the on-hold executive session.
Right.
And at the conclusion of that, prior to any further spend, they would bring back findings of what that had already, so the first class as well as the executive class bring back findings to prove that this is worth investing additionally into.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
We good with that motion there? Mr. Shepherd?
It's fine. And it's the vendor really has to be the one that says, this is okay with me, but yes, that's fine. As a motion, it's fine.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up, ordinance number 3018.
Ordinance number 3018. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Word of Life Church of Apopka, located at 1853 Vic Road, comprised of 55, comprised of 5.73 acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk severability conflicts and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. Request is to annex one 5.73 acre parcel into the city limits of the city of Apopka, properties located at 1853 Vic Road and site of the Word of Life Church, contiguous to the state limits and therefore is eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida statute 171. Simon of a city future land use and zoning designation will occur at a later date through the action of the city council. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading of ordinance number 3018, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on August 16, 2023. If you have any questions, staff and applicant would be happy to answer them.
Questions for Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3018 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3017.
Ordinance number 3017. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to mixed use for a certain portion of certain real property located at 225 East 7th Street, owned by Community Health Centers, Inc., comprising one and a half acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, for the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. The applicant has submitted a request for a small-scale future land use amendment from office to mixed use for 225 East 7th Street, which is the site of Community Health Centers' medical office building. Centenary map on the screen shows the location, and the applicant is requesting the future land use to allow an amendment and increase of floor area ratio, or FAR, on the subject property for proposed future expansion of the existing medical office building. As the office future land use designation prevents a maximum floor area ratio of 0.3. The FAR allowed under the mixed use within the central business district in which this property is located is 2.0, and that would help facilitate the expansion of the building. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and on July 11, 2023, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Recommend motion this afternoon is approved first reading of ordinance number 30, or 3017, and hold it over for second reading and adoption on August 16, 2023. If you have any questions, myself and the applicant are here.
Any questions for Bobby?
My only question would be, you know, any concerns about NGRAS parking with the building expansion?
No, this time, a development plan will be forthcoming. It's my understanding that we use the footprint of the existing site.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3017 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3010.
Ordinance number 3010. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from industrial to commercial for certain real property generally located east of Semron Commerce Place, west of Lake Pleasant Road, and north of State Road 436, owned by Shake the Nations Ministry, Inc., comprising 2.4 acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Hi, Jim Hitt, Community Development Director. This item and the following item are both, have both been requested to be postponed or tabled to a date certain, which is September 6, 2023, by the applicant.
Can I just ask you why?
More time to look at the development itself and what it does and what it cannot do in accordance with each of the different land uses that they're looking at. Floor area ratio is a big one.
Any other questions for Jim? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for a motion to continue this item to the date certain of September 6, 2023.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, ordinance number 3011.
Ordinance number 3011. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from IL light and industrial to C core corridor commercial for certain real property generally located east of Semron Commerce Place, west of Lake Pleasant Road, and north of State Road 436, owned by Shake the Nations Ministry, Inc., comprising 2.4 acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Same request to postpone till the date certain of September 6, 2023.
Okay, any questions for Jim? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close a public hearing, look for a motion to continue this item to a date certain of September 6, 2023.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-20.
Resolution 2023-20. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida censoring Mayor Brian Nelson.
Okay, so I'll just read it. Again, there was slight language change after council had taken a look at it, put a little bit more formality to the language itself, so I'll just read it out loud. It doesn't deviate too far from what I originally read two meetings ago. So I'll just restate the title, a resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida censoring Mayor Brian Nelson. Whereas a core tenant of serving in elected offices transparency and truthfulness to ensure public trust, and whereas Mayor Brian Nelson by charter serves as the chief executive officer of the city and shall be responsible to the electorate for the administration of all city affairs placed in his charge. And whereas on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, in a public hearing within the city of Apopka Council chambers, Mayor Nelson made public comments that demonstrated his prior public comments about the employment status of the now former city attorney were untrue. And whereas on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, the former city attorney did voluntarily resign during a public hearing within the city of Apopka Council chambers as recorded and approved in the minutes. And whereas Mayor Nelson on Wednesday, June 7, 2023, did on the record inform city council, the former city attorney had no longer, was no longer employed as of that date, June 7, 2023, as recorded and approved in minutes. And whereas on Wednesday, June 21, 2023, when asked by city council about the employment status of the former city attorney, Mayor Nelson indicated he was still employed as of that date, June 21, 2023, and receiving pay as recorded and approved in the minutes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, that section one, the foregoing whereas clauses are incorporated herein, and the city council of Apopka formally censures Mayor Brian Nelson for misleading the city council and by the same actions, the people of Apopka through untruthful public comments regarding the employment status of the former city attorney. In section two, this resolution is effective upon adoption by the city council with or without the signature of the mayor dated this second day of August, 2023. Again, the driver of this resolution, and I know that the mayor made some comments publicly on one of the local news outlets, and I'll have the record straight, being that Commissioner Nesta was the one that brought up the employment status of the attorney on both occasions. So it being politically charged from my loss in the mayoral races patently untrue. What drove us to this resolution was the fact, as I stated within this resolution, on June 21, there was direct public comments for the formal record that were not the same as June 7 and very untrue as to the status of our city attorney. The city council needs to be, but in all fairness to the mayor, you have a lot of power per our charter. You've made comments about how some of the votes that the city council takes are ceremonial, and I've been forthright to say I agree with that. I mean, when we did the vote of no confidence with our chief, that's a case in point of prime example. But there's a few resources within our city that, per our charter, we have direct control over in terms of they serve at the pleasure of this board, that being the attorney and our city clerk. And the city attorney is a very critical role within this city, with all of the development, all the business that comes through these walls, meeting in and meeting out. Having a good relationship with our legal counsel is paramount for us to be able to do this job successfully. We operated for, well, from June 7 to June 21, based off of your words, saying that our former city attorney was no longer employed for the city. So meaning for all of those days between the 7th and the 21st, had we had a legal question that we need to have answered, we've had no idea that he was even employed by our city. And I don't need to go any further. I mean, the record is what the record is. We approved it, yourself included unanimously on the minutes that we reference within this resolution. And, you know, we as a council, as well as the people that we represent, deserve better.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
The only thing I will ask after he's done.
You want to ask?
I see that you're going to read a statement, but we don't have that statement in front of us.
Come on down.
Sylvester Hall, I would just simply state again, Mayor, you can make a difference. Everything starts with you. You can make a difference. And like I'm speaking now, instead of you looking at me, you're filling with papers. I'll watch when certain members of the community come up, you give them no respect. So everything starts with you, Mayor. I know the problem. Now, you got to make up in your mind whether you're willing to change. Because contrary to popular belief, everybody in your administration, they beating to your Leadership starts from top down, and merit starts with you. You can make that change starting today. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? All right, just try to make this as painless as possible. Want to go back, gosh, quite a few years ago, even before I was on council, Cliff Shepherd at the time was our city attorney, and the tourist agreement came up, and he was excluded up until the end of the agreement from even weighing in, which as you know, we, when I came into office, one of the things I did was to change the tourist agreement so that me, the mayor, was no longer the ultimate de facto leader of that developers agreement. Basically, before, between Jim Hitt and myself, we could make that determination as to what went in on the town center. So I think that, you know, it just shows you that, you know, kind of where we've been, and I just want to kind of go through that. Second thing is, there's a memo in there from Vladimir Ortega, our finance director, to Commissioner Becker on July 7. Take a look at that. Third, Joe Byrd was a unanimous vote confirmed by Commissioner Becker, Velasquez, and Smith. An email thread between Commissioner Becker and Michael Rodriguez on February 23.
Point of order, how is this relevant to the facts that are here?
And what's glaringly omitted, what's glaringly omitted from this communication that I received from Vladimir Ortega, our former finance director, is there's a lack of my response to her, which I replied to this memo, but you conveniently leave it out.
And we need to stay on, the point of order is to speak specifically to this.
I'm happy to turn this over to our media partners.
You don't need to do that. This, we need to stay on topic.
I've got a quote from an email on February 27, 2023, from Joe Byrd, our former city attorney, and it reads, "Often these behaviors arguably criminal were fueled by politicization and misunderstanding or distortion of events at the public meeting. I was accused on social media of speaking in..."
Are you going to draw a direct correlation to this paperwork? Because technically, you're not heading this. The vice mayor is at this point for a censure.
I'm responding.
None of the, it's point of order. You're not speaking to what we're actually talking about.
That's correct.
Yeah. Mr. Shepherd, or Attorney Shepherd?
Yes, sir.
Are they saying I can't, I can't?
You have to stay on point.
The facts that he's presenting have no merit to what's being presented here today.
I don't know about those facts. As I understand it, you're running the meeting. I don't know of any procedures, and I do know that generally speaking, there may be, there's a point where at court, a judge will say, okay, I'm going to give you some latitude, but rap it up. So maybe, I guess, there's no rule for me to say, well, he can speak, or no, he can't. So it's your meeting. But I will say, I do remember that when we moved it to this day, it was so he could respond. That's what I remember.
But a response that's relevant.
It is relevant. We're talking about the city attorneys.
That's fine. I'll directly rebut any thing that he claims. I've already kind of done a cursory, and this is going to be laughable where he's going with this.
Okay. Three trims had tried to keep him from reading from an investigative report that I was asked to provide because in doing so, he would have violated the non-disparagement clause in an employee separation agreement signed by all parties, including the employee's attorney. The city could have been liable for the violation. You will recall this is the meeting where I attempted to go privately to Commissioner Becker at the dais after the meeting, and he yelled twice at me, F dollar sign, dollar sign, dollar sign U. Several staff members heard him that day, and I'm not sure if the microphone was still on or if it was recorded. One person who lives out of state later posted on social media that used the expletive to Commissioner Becker and questioned my character as an attorney and a minister. Similarly, there was feedback from individuals on another encounter. Unfortunately, I have to point out, it was Commissioner Becker again, but I would note, none of the commissioners are so argumentative with me in council meetings when I attempted to advise the council. On this occasion, Commissioner Becker did not schedule. schedule a meeting with me prior to the council meeting to discuss certain settlements that I was reported to council. These settlements involved confidential medical health information. I had to be firm and direct and not answer his questions to avoid violating federal statutes. I was later able to meet with Commissioner Becker and explain how the settlements are evaluated, but the damage on social media by other people was done. My attempt to refuse to discuss items with confidential medical information in a public meeting was interpreted as not being transparent and hiding something. Next up.
I would love, hopefully at the end you can point to the relevancy.
Sure.
We're still wasting time here, but that's fine.
Okay. So email between Commissioner Becker and Michael Rodriguez on February 23rd and March 1st about canceling again a report workshop is there. Now.
Where is that one?
Which one is that?
Because I want to be able to read it. Because I'm not shying away from anything that I've written.
Okay. Michael Rodriguez, vote to confirm unanimous by Becker, Bankson, and Smith. Commissioner Becker was the only commissioner not to call Rodriguez and ask any tough questions he might have before confirming his, his appointment.
But his appointment?
Becker screaming expletives at Rodriguez in city hall on February 28th. On April 5th, Commissioner Becker Velazquez and Esteban removed Rodriguez with justification for terminating him because he was on the losing side of the Windover case, the first court case to test a new state law, and two minor reasons which have yet to be disclosed. Now I have gone a little out of chronological order, but I think you'll see why. May 16th, opinion from Michael Rodriguez on charter officers and termination. Next up, we have from William Spicola, which you have his former general counsel to Governor Scott. And I want to read just one quick note from him.
And that note cost the taxpayers $2,500 that you exclusively ordered for no reason.
Okay. So here is the, the difference between department heads and the city clerk and the city attorney provided for in section 3.01 is that the city clerk and city attorney serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council as opposed to other city employees and administrative officers. The mayor can ultimately terminate because the mayor and the city council are separate authorities under chapter section 3.01 requires that both the mayor and city council agree on hiring or firing the city clerk and city attorney. Next up, we have the agreement, the, I also had our attorney, Cliff Shepherd, take a look at the agreement. And just a real quick highlight there. As you all are aware, the city council, without the support of the mayor, voted 3-2 to terminate Mr. Rodriguez. Thereafter, the question arose to whether the vote alone was sufficient to terminate the city attorney. Concerning the question in reverse, could the mayor or his own, on his own and without least, at least two additional supporting votes on city council terminate Mr. Rodriguez? In my opinion, the answer to both questions is no.
Can I ask you where you, where is that? I see.
It's in there.
Okay. So I see the Mayor Nelson, Cliff Shepherd.
Yes.
Dated July 19th. Am I correct in that? Is that the one that you just read?
Yes. So next, Commissioner Becker demanded an out of sunshine meeting for personnel issue on May 3rd.
Okay. Where is that one? I, I don't know. I'm kind of lost here because you gave me all these things just now.
Be more specific about that.
That's when we had a personnel issue. You want to have a sunshine announcement.
Because I didn't want to drag people's name through the mud that are on your staff.
Okay. But you kept, you kept going after our city attorney. Now, Cliff, is, when you talk about a personnel issue, can it be brought up out of sunshine with the entire council?
Not unless there's a pending lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you. One other question for you, Cliff. Did you remove the whereas clause that states on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023, through interpreted charter authority, a majority 3-2 vote of city council resulted in a formal approved action to terminate the city attorney as recorded and approved in minutes? Or did Commissioner Becker?
You mean from the resolution that was initially drafted? Yes.
You did it?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. One last thing on our outside council for the record.
Wait, wait, hold on. Clarify that point?
Clear. Say that again.
There was a, in the original draft of this resolution by Mr. Becker, there was a reference to the vote of council. And since the, the basic premise of the resolution was misleading statements, that was not, in my view, relevant. And so I struck it. But I also sent the draft back to Commissioner Becker to take a look at and make sure it was still consistent with what he wanted to do. And he agreed. So I sent it on to Mr. Byrden.
Exactly. Exactly the point to be made. Because the relevance of this resolution is not squabbling over the interpretation of the charter.
Correct.
Because that's not in the resolution.
Correct.
Nor is it to challenge what day his resignation was effective. The resolution clearly states that the mayor on 21st lied, disputing comments that he made on record June 7th.
And, and that's why I took the other part out.
One last thing as to our outside council. For the record and to do my due diligence, I reached out to two other law firms in the central Florida area who represent cities and both declined to bid on the city of Apopka. No offense, Mr. Shepherd, but I thought we needed to look at, you know, to look outside and make sure that we, we got a capable, obviously a very capable attorney that will represent us well. So thank you. On June 7th, the city council made a statement about Michael Rodriguez was no longer, was no longer employed by the separation agreement and severance package. It was not signed by both parties, which effectively kept him on as the city attorney. He continued to work from home answering staff's legal questions, but stayed out of city hall because he and his family were being threatened and stalked on social media, including pictures of his car while in city parking lot, or even where he was eating lunch. Sound familiar, commissioners? The separation agreement was dated on July 1st.
Wait, wait. I, I just, when you said sound familiar commissioners, who are you referred to? Because I've never, I didn't stalk him. I didn't do anything.
No, no, no. As in, as in, I'd been stalked by people. As in, we all have been stalked by outside people.
But that, it sounds like we're stalking him.
No, no.
So you're saying sound familiar commissioners?
That we've been, we've all been stalked. So.
I, I don't know. I don't.
I'm not a stalk.
I don't use the word stalk.
I said I had a, I had a threat. I had a threat.
And again, can I, point of order, this is insanity.
I know.
This is not relevant to the resolution. Nothing that we're discussing right now.
The separation agreement was dated on July 7th.
And Vice Mayor, you can shut this down to a point. You have the power to do this. You are the chair right now.
The separation.
Point of order, this is not relevant to the conversation.
The separation agreement was dated on July 7th.
Point of order, this is not relevant to the conversation.
But because of the continued attacks on Michael's family.
I appeal to the board that we.
Termination date became effective on June 22nd, 2023.
I motion that we stop the chair from speaking on relevant, non-relevant items on this topic.
And initial by both parties.
Yeah.
If you would like, you can ask Joe Patton or Chuck Fabry collaborate with the story now, but I'm not sure you're considering that.
Wow. Wow. What a circus you've created. Absolute circus.
This is, I mean, I, I always harken back to the commentary on the, on the employee survey that was just presented the last meeting. And in that verbatim, it just talks about how this council has devolved in such a circus. And let me, I want to be fully transparent on, on some of the things. And I know I'm, the mayor had his time. That's kind of why I didn't want to interject because there's a couple of things on here that are very one-sided and, and how the mayor has decided to report. First and foremost, we've gone totally off topic. If you want to create a censure of me on what I've done on any one of these bullet points, I welcome you to do that because there is nothing that I would hide from any person within this city, period. I stand by every single thing I've done from this seat, from that seat, for how I've carried myself. When I've not carried myself in a manner that's how I want myself to act, I've apologized to the people. So here's the three primary things. And I, this is perplexing to me why you would even bring Ms. Ortega, our former finance director into this. This memo that she wrote to me was basically saying that I was rude in a public setting because during the presentation of our CAFER or our audited findings, the auditor basically said that there were some challenges because Mrs. Ortega was new to the role. And so I made a comment to say, oh, well, that's just business as usual type stuff. Meaning you're getting used to the role. There's going to be things. It's the same thing that happened in Ms. Sherman in the last presentation from our auditor. There's a ramp up period of you being coming familiar with the role. And there's naturally things that are going to go, you know, not normal. So she wrote me a two-page memo saying that she was very embarrassed that I would make that comment and insinuate that it was business as usual and I wasn't appreciative of her work, which was not the case whatsoever. I replied via email as soon as I received this. But conveniently, that's not attached to what he wants to present as his narrative. In terms of the emails back and forth between the prior city attorney, Mr. Rodriguez and myself as it relates to the Gannon workshops, I won't go into all the details of reading every single word. This is public record. I encourage anybody that wants it to go get it. Because again, I don't write anything that I don't assume is going to be read by every single person within this city. What I was frustrated over, as well as other people on this council, is that we many times said, our, our acting city attorney at the time had advised the safety committee to stop doing what they're doing for fear that it would put us in litigation risk. Yet we were going to have workshops to talk through the Gannon findings before they were formally published. On two occasions, those workshops were canceled at the 11th hour. My frustration tabled over and I sent an email strongly worded, but I do not think unprofessional at all. So I encourage anybody, everybody, news outlets, please pull that when you're doing your reporting on this story, please. As it relates to our former city attorney before Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Mr. Byrd, and I'm, I'm quite perplexed and curious why he is still engaged in our city of affairs when he's not been in that capacity for a long, long time. But let me give you a little background about that exchange. And I take full ownership. I did say those words. It was outside of the formal meeting. We had gotten a report of findings related to our prior fire chief, Chief Carnasale, that our mayor, again, if we want to go back on things he said publicly and then denied and, and did 180 after the fact, was the termination of Chief Carnasale. But we had been, a, a report was placed on the dais prior to the meeting. Naturally, when we have new information on the dais, we pick that up. We start reading it, right? During that proceeding, we were supposed to be ratifying the appointment of Chief Wyland to his role. As I was thumbing through that report of findings, there was many times where Chief Wyland's name was in that report. Since I had just received that report, I didn't know in what context. So I wanted to have, when we started talking about the appointment of Chief Wyland, I started referencing the report, to which Attorney Byrd at the time admonished me for saying, well, that's not a public record. But quite to the contrary, because as soon as that document hits our dais, this is public record. If anybody wants to come up here and get one of these, have at it. I thought the, the issue was over. After the meeting, he decided that he wanted to come over and, and continue that admonishment, saying you shouldn't be referencing that, this, that, and the other. I got frustrated. I used a bad choice of words. I apologized to him after the fact. The most recent example of the mayor likes to keep on harping on is the fact that Attorney Rodriguez, or the former Attorney Rodriguez and I got into a heated exchange on the date that he has within the packet. Let me tell you what transpired there. And again, every, every single director that was in that room can corroborate my story. I walked into the meeting. All the directors were sitting in the conference room. Mr. Rodriguez came to me initially as soon as I sat down and said, do you have five minutes? His attorney office is situated directly next to our, the large conference room. One door separates it. It's very thin walls. We went in there. The spirit of that conversation was basically, he knew that I was going to call for his termination. He said that he does, I would not have the support because his interpretation is the mayor and the council, separate entities, have to do separate votes on the topic. And he knew that the vote was not going to pass. Meaning he had already had a conversation with our mayor. Oh, by the way, our attorney serves this entire city council, not just the mayor. So he already knew that the mayor was not going to vote in accordance with the termination of his position. By me not acquiescing to his narrative, we got into a spirited conversation. Two grown men behind closed doors. We used grown men words that we probably shouldn't use on the street on a given day or in these council chambers. By the time we exited his office, we were both very irritable, if that's a best use of words. All of the director levels had left that conference room by that time, were huddled, huddled out in the hallway because I'm, ideally, they were probably uncomfortable with the level of, of volume that we were speaking at within the mayor's or the attorney's office. We went out to the hallway. I was visibly upset. But Attorney Rodriguez continued his narrative. He was pacing around, obviously in an agitated state. And he said those words that I mentioned in the last meeting that we talked about this, where he said, Commissioner Becker, you need to grow up and start acting like an elected official. And he stormed out. And that was the last we heard of it. Those are the things at play here, folks. This is it. If that's all you have, great. And I'm glad that Mr. Shepherd gave an opinion on, on the interpretation of our charter. I'm just now reading that. I'm, I'm sorry that that's the case that I'm reading that in this, in this forum, not versus a side communication. But all of that pre-story, when we thought that we had the interpretation of the charter to terminate the city attorney position, again, we tried to take the necessary steps to gain consensus of this city council. You were going to force us to have a legal council represent the majority's decision on that vote on April 5th. We obtained an attorney that said that she was going to do that. When I gave the option to say, instead of us going the legal route and getting a declaratory judgment, I said, hey, let's go to the state attorney's office. Because again, I referenced their website. And I've said this many times. If it's just one commissioner against one person of staff, and then it's a one-on-one, he said, he said, or she said, he said, whatever, they're not going to typically do that. But if you have a 3-2 vote of council, you afford the opportunity for our city attorney to provide a rebuttal and put it up to the attorney general's office, they would weigh in on a representation. Your rebuttal to that was to have our city attorney, who has kind of perverse incentive to say, yeah, well, I, I don't think that the attorney general would make that declared. But fact of the matter is, we had a unanimous vote to say, if we did that, everybody would adhere to what her opinion was. But it didn't get to that. Attorney Rodriguez, before that meeting ended, he voluntarily resigned his position. So that gets us all the way up to May 3rd. But all of that is irrelevant to the resolution that I just read. The only relevancy is June 7th and June 21st. June 7th, you said our attorney was still employed with the city of Apopka, or not employed with the city of Apopka. June 21st, you said that he, he was. And not only was, he was still going to work until sometime in July. That's the spirit of the resolution. You lied to this council. And here you are, trying to mask it over all of this stuff that I, I'm actually proud of. Because I'm not a perfect person. I'm going to screw up. I'm going to get heated because I'm passionate about doing what I'm doing up here. I'm going to cuss sometimes. And I'm not going to like it. And I'm going to apologize to the people. In fact, and I don't care because Mr. Rodriguez likes to say that, that meeting, after we had our, our blow up in that office that you referenced during that meeting as well, I made an apology in these chambers. I made an apology to our director level staff that were there in, in attendance. And I, without mentioning his name, I apologized to the person that I was having the conversation with. During one of the breaks, he comes up to the dais and he says, I accept your apology. Because I know it's me that you were talking about. It's like, yeah. And he starts to walk away. I was like, is it one-sided? I mean, it was a two-way exchange, a heated exchange here. He's like, oh, yeah, yeah, I apologize. Come on. I'm dealing with, like I said, I'm not perfect. But I stand by every single thing that I've ever said on this dais. And I'm not going to apologize for that. But we have a resolution on our hand. If, if the mayor wants to totally sidestep and not address anything that was in the resolution, I guess that's his idea of rebuttal. But I would entertain a motion, or I would move to approve the resolution as, as written.
Yeah. So the only adjustment I want to make to the resolution is that after city attorney, everywhere you put city attorney, we need the name Michael Rodriguez in there because we have had multiple city attorneys, obviously. We want to make sure we have the right city attorney that's being referenced in this resolution. So after every spot that says city attorney, it needs to say former city attorney, Michael Rodriguez. And there's one, two, three, four spots that it says that.
Yeah. I amend, so I would amend my motion to include Michael Rodriguez after former city attorney where all instances occur within the resolution. And ask that the council approve the resolution.
So moved with those changes.
I just want to say one thing also. When it was heard on July 5th, it was supposed to be tabled for July 19th. But because of the absence of our, our co-commissioner, Commissioner Smith, he was away with the Lake Apopka.
Till August 2nd.
So then we moved it to August 2nd. And here we are. So it's the same.
Correct.
Three. Commissioner Smith is not here to cast a vote. So on that note, we did move it to give him an opportunity to cast a vote. And it's, and he's not here today.
That's my recollection.
Okay. So I'll second. Just so that we can move forward. And that's my hope, that we can move forward. And all we ask for, Mr. Chair, is that when we sit up here.
If I can, sorry to interrupt you. Currently, the chair is, is Commissioner Becker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For this.
Missed the chair.
I didn't realize that.
You, you, you're, it's your item and you're running the meeting for this particular item because it involves Mr. The mayor.
Oh, okay.
So you're currently the chair.
Okay. Well, then I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion, the motion carries three to one with the mayor, chair voting in opposition. So the motion, the motion carries three to one with the mayor chair voting in opposition.
But that's with the correction of adding the name.
Correct, that was my motion.
All right, next up, city council reports. Commissioner Nesta.
What a waste of 30 minutes, that just was. So irrelevant to what we're talking about, but I will move on. Today's August 2nd, is my wife's birthday.
Happy birthday.
So happy birthday to Lauren. Love her, she's awesome, she makes my house a home, and she's my partner, so thank you for that. Onto the destruction of property that happened in the overlooks at Parkside, I have been looking into that with the chief of police. There's a lot of moving parts there, and a lot that I can't completely comment on, but it's not falling on deaf ears, and I am looking into that, Mr. Hall. Mrs. Sherman, the Economic Development Department, we allocated or earmarked COVID funds for that department. We didn't use those for that department, because we don't have one. Those have to be earmarked, but then they have to be spent by a certain time. What happens to those? Are we on track with those, and how do we allocate those correctly?
We did include those in the FY '24 tentative budget.
Okay.
Earmarked as December 2024, and spent by December 2026.
Okay, by December 26, okay. And then also, the forensic audit, we've talked about this multiple times, privately, emails, all that. What do we need to do to formally get an RFP moving on that? Do you want me to get a council? Are you guys in agreeance that we need a forensic audit, and would you agree to do an RFP?
We've got an auditor, we have an outside auditor. I don't understand what-
They're not, they're not as exhaustive as what a forensic audit would do.
Correct.
And this would be because?
There's inconsistencies in paperwork that I've seen.
Why don't you give, give Ms. Sherman your inconsistencies?
Like, can you give me what you found inconsistent in some of the paperwork?
You're not going to share that with us, because he's a-
Oh, okay.
No, I'd rather just a forensic auditor, hopefully prove me wrong. I hope, I hope I'm wrong, I'm looking at documents completely wrong, they're going to say, everything is golden, perfect, I can move on, I don't ever have to bring that up again. So I'd like, for the comfort level of not only us as commissioners that don't see every dime that goes in and out of here, and for the residents that are also asking for this, I ask that we have an RFP for that.
I'm not opposed to it. Can you have, I just want to know what the expectation of the forensic audit, like, let's have a comparison between, to Mayor's point, we have an audit, the forensic audit would do what? And then we can have comfort that that's going to-
I want to confirm. There needs to be a confirmation that things were done correctly year-to-date, not year-to-date, but for the last few years. I need a, I need a comfort level that every dime that has been spent, every cent that has been spent is as appropriate.
Definitely, we would have to have a scope of work.
Sure.
So that would have to-
And I can work with you on that. And I can bring it back too, if you guys want to help refine that a little bit as well, and get a comfort level there.
So it's healthy.
Yeah.
So we're going to draft a scope of work and bring it back to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
As long as that's the will of the commission. Okay. Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay, Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I, and you brought this to our attention twice, Mr. Hall, and I, and I need coaching on this one, because I, it makes me uncomfortable looking at this. Makes me even more uncomfortable knowing that if I share this on social media, it's out there forever. So I struggle, and I get conflicted about images like this, because I'm so uncomfortable talking to them. So I'll need that coaching, but I say for the record and publicly here, there's no room for this garbage. I mean, and I'm hoping that, you know, hopefully Chief McKinley has some sort of, you know, kind of direction around what might have transpired here, whether it was a one-off thing, or unknown kind of entity that are doing this elsewhere, but it's a shame that we have to deal with this, and we're sitting here in 2023. So I don't want to sidestep the issue, because it is an issue, I just, it's something I need help with. The, and I don't know procedurally, you know, we had tabled in the business, the last meeting, we had a resolution that was tabled. I don't know if we have to formally bring it off the table and just say, staff is going to take it up from-
I don't remember the resolution, but if you didn't table it to a specific date, then you don't have to bring it up. But if you tabled to this date, then you need to bring it up and either continue the table or deal with it.
Well, the issue was the road renaming, and so it, in the minutes that we just approved, it says August 2nd is the date certain. So I just want to make sure that we take it off the table. If staff is saying that the request is being removed, I just want to make sure that we're by the book.
The answer to your question is, you are by the book. I did read, I think in whatever outlet that the person sought to be honored had decided he didn't want to be. Whether that's still a thing, I don't know at the staff level, but as long as it was tabled to this date, it would be appropriate to bring it up and decide it, or to continue the table, one of those two things.
I guess I just need staff kind of direction, because it sounded like-
It was in the-
Commissioner Airsmith had taken it away from consideration.
And he did write something in the Apopka chief-
Right.
Last Friday, saying that he was withdrawing his name, and that he thanked, he thanked the person that actually recommended, but at this time, even if he were to be approved, if it was to be approved, he would not have accepted to have his name replaced in existing family name that he felt was a big contributor to the City of Apopka.
Let's be clear, though, there was, we could have, as Pam brought to your attention, we could have named the new part of Benyon, or Harmon Road for Bill Airsmith. So we tabled the whole thing, and not, we didn't even consider that as a, as an alternative, but former Commissioner Airsmith is, wants to take it off the table, so I would agree, that's what we'll do.
Well, I just think procedurally, we have to bring it off the table and then just-
And then say, we're not going to do it. And you can say, because it's at Mr. Airsmith's request, or whatever reason, but yes.
I just want to bring it proper closure, so it doesn't fester-
Correct, so it's not just laying out there.
Right.
I forget, what was the number of that resolution? 2023-19. Okay, 2023-19.
So should I just do a formal motion?
Yeah.
So probably two motions, right? I got to take it off the table, and then a motion, is it a staff recommendation that we withdraw? I don't know with the mayor's-
I don't, I just let it sit, I don't, I don't know, we need to do anything. We have to bring it back up?
Well, we have to do something with it.
The only reason you would is because you tabled it to a specific date. You can continue the table to other dates or indefinitely, but you said you would do something today, but what that thing is could be re-tableing it, or could be deciding it.
Yeah, well, he already said that he-
So I would move to take it off the table, and I-
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker to take-
Second.
The, what, 2023-19? Off the table. Got a commissioner, got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And then, do you have, and then, I guess, you as head of staff, are you, do you have a recommendation to withdraw consideration at the-
We'll make it, yeah, sure.
Okay, so I would, I would make a motion to withdraw the consideration at the request of Commissioner Airsmith, and supported by staff, and then until such time-
I don't know that it was supported by staff, but that's your motion.
Well-
But, it's fine, you make the motion to-
So I, no, I guess I would then appeal to the chair as the head of staff. Do you, do you have a recommendation on this particular topic, or else we can make another motion to take it down the curve, or down the road?
No, that's fine. No, I'm just saying, that staff didn't have anything to do with the, you know, with Commissioner, former Commissioner Airsmith, as to-
But his comments in the public room were that he was unaware of that-
Right, staff had nothing to do with his pulling, withdrawing from it. So I just, you just make the motion that-
What I'm, I'm not trying to, like, I'm not trying to work an angle here. What I'm trying to get clarity on is, we've taken it off the table, because we had to, because procedurally, we did it table till today.
Right.
I can make another motion one of two ways. We can either table it further, which I'm happy to do that too, or if staff is recommending-
Staff's not, staff's not here, staff's not recommending anything. So you can make the motion to, to take it off-
Okay, so I, I motioned that we table Resolution 2023-19.
No, but you already did, you already-
No, I've taken it off the table.
So now it's an actual, but, right, right. Former Commissioner Airsmith already said he doesn't want this at all. So it doesn't have to be staff-related at all.
Okay.
The former commissioner does not want it, and we can move on.
Great, I, so I'll pass the motion. Motion 2023-19, I move to, I guess, reject at the request of former Commissioner Airsmith.
That's fine, okay. Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, say goodbye-
Second.
-by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay? Is that it?
Yeah, and then the RFP, I'm, we got the response, I'm assuming that's on the docket for the next meeting, in terms of proposal, or the presentation on that one.
Okay, Commissioner Velazquez?
Boy, this was a real heated one today. No, I don't have anything, I just kind of want to make this remark, if you allow me privilege right now, and that is that I'm really hoping that after this resolution today, it's not an attack on any particular person. I just feel that as a council on this dais, that we need to kind of come together. That's part of what we're trying to do with our staff, is to kind of address some of the issues that are causing some of the dissension that's going on. And of course, when I actually read this, obviously, there were some comments there regarding the commission and the council. So I think we need to work at it also, to some extent. And the only thing I ask of the chair is to consider us. We're elected officials, just as he is, and the expectation from our public, as it is from the staff, is that we conduct ourselves in a very professional manner, and it's okay to agree, to disagree, or disagree, to, that we don't attack each other. And the most important thing is that we all come to this council, and we want to feel valued, and we want to feel respected, and sometimes that doesn't always happen up here. And the only thing I'm asking our chair, Mr. Mayor, is that, that you consider us when there's votes that are important. Like today, you actually presented all this paperwork at the last moment, and for me, that's not enough time for us to look at it, to kind of say, well, what is this? And I find this is, it happens more often than I kind of like to say, that we get these last-minute, you know, documentations to kind of vote on. So I'm just hoping that after today, we find a way to start, we be the example, and start to show each other that we respect each other, and that our voices matter just as much. That's important to me. So that's all I have to say. Okay. You see, even right now, when you, it's like very dismissive.
No.
And that's, that's something that I think we should all work at, is to show some value, some respect, some professionalism to each other. I don't want to be dismissive of anyone up here. I value everyone that's up here, to include the mayor. I understand that this is, it's not an easy job to come in and be, and deal with the operation of the city, and deal with a lot of demands from the public, but at the same time, we have to find a balance, and that's important.
Mr. Shepherd, do you have anything for the-
Nothing that you probably aren't aware of, but I will say, for those who are unaware, the Live Local Act, which was one of the products of this session of the legislature, will severely impact the city's ability to regulate affordable housing, as to where it should go, and what rules should apply to it. And it is a sad example, in my opinion, and I recognize I'm somewhat political here, not trying to be, but I, I'm a big supporter of home rule, because it allows you to do what you do, because you know your community, you should be able to make those decisions. But the legislature thinks it knows better than you, so now you can't make those decisions.
I couldn't agree more. Since we're on the city attorney's report, Mr. Shepherd, I provided you with some documentation that a member of our public had provided you.
Yes, and I did look at that.
And what are your findings?
Well, part, there's part of it I can't explain at all, which is, the, the part of the charter which seems to have changed, but there's not a reference that I can go to, where it's, there used to be a reference about strong mayor government, or mayor, council, formal government, and there doesn't appear to be in what was there. But the other thing, it was a reference to me in an ordinance that has nothing to do with the charter, except in so much as it was saying that all, I think it said something like, the all ordinances at some point, at that point, I don't remember when it was, 2016, whatever it was, were carried over. So it wasn't, the two things were unrelated to each other, so without knowing exactly the point that was trying to be made, I'm not sure why that was in there, and it was, you know, a kind of a murky, or not murky, blurry copy. The other provision, which was a, basically a screenshot, or maybe a copy of the very beginning part of the charter, and how that was changed, or when that, there's no reference for me to go off of, so I honestly don't know. I know I didn't have anything to do with it, there was no, to my recollection, my first tenure city attorney, there was never a charter amendment at all, so I don't know when that might have occurred, or how.
Yeah, and that's what needs to be found out.
Yeah. I'll try to get to the bottom of that.
Section 1 clearly strikes the idea that we're sitting in a strong mayor, formal government, that language there, and there's no ordinance to support of its removal, nor is there any record of vote to the residents of Apopka to invoke that change.
Well, I do not know why or when, but I will try to get to the bottom of that, but I do know that the key language regarding what the mayor's powers are still there, and that's really what determines, at the end of the day, the form of government you're under. And that's, that's what's there, and that was there even when I was here the first go-round, so. But as to the stuff regarding the re, I don't know exactly what the word is, reinvigoration of ordinances or something, I don't, I'm sorry?
Reinvigoration?
It could have been, I don't have the folder in front of me, but it was some language of that, if that's the case, that's typically something that's done to tell MuniCode, we want these things to continue in MuniCode. And I think that's what it was, but it didn't have a real reference, it was just kind of, here's a picture and your name's on it. So that's what I think it is.
So I, yeah, I would like to get clarity, or, and all the stuff that Mr. McKinney gave us, all those commissioners, I handed that packet off to Mr. Shepherd after the last meeting.
Yeah, I have it actually in my briefcase, and I was going to try to write you a review of all of it.
And then, to, how do we, you know, you gave us the options around the charter review the last, the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
How do we get, I would like to get that started.
Okay, well, here's, here's the way it should go. First, at a, either at a workshop or at a meeting, as an agenda, in discussion, however, you need to provide direction as to which way you want to go. Because there's, as I mentioned, you have a couple of ways. I've given you what is my recommendation, but you are certainly not bound to follow it, and you will not offend me if you choose not to follow it. My recommendation was for you all to do the charter review and act as the charter review committee yourselves. You are completely permitted to do that, and ultimately, that's important, because you will be the deciders of what's going to go to the voters. The only way that doesn't happen is if the voters do their own referendum initiative petition process, it gets validated, and then that goes to the voters as well. But ordinarily, if it's a charter review through the commission, it's done by either a citizen group that then brings their changes to you all, and you all decide what does and doesn't go to the voters, or you do it yourselves. And it can be an entire review, as is often the case, and I think is what you're talking about, but sometimes things come up where we didn't realize this was going to be a glitch in our charter, and we want a specific amendment on this specific thing, whatever it might be. So the first thing is, which way you want to go? Do you want a citizen committee? Do you want to do it up here as a council? Do you want a blend of the two? As long as you get an odd number, so you can get past, get things moved, then that's fine. But ultimately, the decision on what goes on the ballot will come to you. The charter should be broken up, in either case, in manageable sections, and I usually say about two hours per session. So maybe that section's one through three, or maybe it's only one and two, or maybe it's three through seven. It depends on how long they are, how complex they are, how hard they are to understand, and whether they look like they might need changes. I would make a recommendation, regardless of which way you decide the review will go, as to how you might break up those meetings, and we'll do a schedule, and as I mentioned last time, you start the schedule by figuring out what ballot do you want it to be on, and then count back. So you can get all the meetings and the ordinance done and approved at two readings, so it So you can get all the meetings and the ordinance done and approved at two readings, so it can go on the ballot in time to meet whatever your goal is for getting it for the voters. So that's, that's the step. So the next step would be, which way do you want to do the review?
So, yeah, and since Commissioner Smith's not here, I'll bring my point of view or my suggestion or recommendation for us to all react to the next meeting.
Okay.
For us to make a decision, because I do think that we should be doing that.
And in the meantime, if any of you have any questions on why I recommend, as I mentioned in the memo, I'm happy to explain it all to you. I kept the memo brief because I could go on and on and on and tell you why I think this is the best way to do it. But at the end of the day, it's your charter, and however you want to do it is fine by me.
Well, our charter is what, eight pages?
Yeah, it's, it's not that long.
So it's, yeah.
But you'd be surprised how much controversy come out of eight pages.
Yeah.
Or maybe you wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you. All right, just a couple of, under the mayor's report, let's see if I can. Oh, I'm sorry, did I already go past it? Shoot. Anyway, this, on Saturday, we had a group out, how do I go back? Can you go back one for me? I'm sorry.
There we go.
Okay, yeah. Interesting, I was out at, at Welch and Rock Springs Road on Saturday morning at 6:45, and this was the, the, the map for the, the cone, cone company to put out cones to make sure all of our, our folks that were actually doing the traffic separators were, you knew where the cones went. It was really a neat, a neat thing. And so, they got there at 6:45, and they were putting out the, the barrels and cones right up till they started the construction. So I had, our team was out there making sure we were, we were, we were safe. We had Juan there to make sure that the traffic signals, if they needed to adjust them, we'd do it. And so it was really, what a team. So this was the traffic separator on Saturday, as we put, we put down the, had to cut the, the asphalt to put the traffic separator in. Traffic separators, the cement was poured on Sunday, and, and here's what it looks like that night. So what a great team effort, you know, not only Pam and, and Diana of Alma de Var, and our, you know, our two contractors did a, you know, wonderful job getting it done on Saturday and Sunday versus doing nighttime, which could have gummed up traffic for, for hours and hours. So hats off to our public services team and Pam and her team for getting this thing done, which should, should make that intersection a safer intersection for all. Next up, dog mayor election, I guess we've already been brought up. It's Saturday, this Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Propagate with the inauguration party from 5:00 to 9:00. Also, the welcome home heroes on Saturday, same time, 5:00 to 9:00. So, yeah, just go back and forth between the dog mayor election and the welcome home heroes. And the last thing I'll bring up is there, the Border Lake. It looks like we're in, I don't know if you remember, but I, I went to Tallahassee on your behalf to, to, and with Commissioner Banksen's, excuse me, with Representative Banksen's help, a lot of, a lot of hard work. We got the $2 million for the Border Lake, Lake Page, Lake Pleasant fix. So it's still going to be about a $5 million contract, but we, we were able to, we're now 10th on another, another list to get another $2, $2.5 million that would almost pay for the entire piping, which will take us the, the excess water from Border Lake,